Good morning. It is nine oh four, we will go ahead and kick off the September eleventh twenty twenty-five State Board of Education meeting. So, welcome. Um, in light of just sort of the heaviness of yesterday, as well as the sobering reminder of today, let's take a moment of silence before we get started, please. Thank you. If you will, it's Stan for the presentation of the colors today.
Color guard, ace. Color guard, all. Breaker, stand up. Color guard.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're now going to have the national anthem presented.
Good morning, board members. Um, I am pleased to introduce two of our students from the Arkansas School for the Deaf and Blind. Um, the first is going to be our singer, Ms. Cheyenne Caldwell. She's a seventh grader fr- from Bryant, Arkansas. And, um, our signer will be Mr. Jonas Comer. Um, he is from Bentonville and in eighth grade.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we held at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
So, wow, right? Like, if you ever, um, wonder why we do what we do, isn't this just a wonderful reminder that we have the best students in the nation, right here in Arkansas? And they represent us so well. So, um, thank you, uh, to Cabot High School's color guard and the School for the Deaf and Blind for sharing your scholars with us this morning. And, um, as, as we were planning this agenda and noticed that the date fell on September eleventh, um, we decided to say, wait, this is, this is an important day because we're supporting schools all across the la- the nation in making sure that history isn't forgotten, right? This, this is an important day as the nation commemorates and honors the thousands of people that have lost their lives in nine eleven. And it's our job a- a- as educators to teach students about the events and actions that took place that day. But it's hard to re- remember that this was twenty-four years ago, right? So, I think for a lot of the adults in this room, you, you have vivid memories of that day and it, it just seems so recent and real. But a lot of our students in our schools weren't even born yet. So, th- this is important, uh, for us to take some time out and make sure we get it right and, and take an opportunity to hear from our students today about why it's, why it's great to be an American and why we teach patriotism each and every single day. So, to the chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Good morning. My name is Cadet Kaylee Owens and I am honored to serve as a cadet group commander of Cabot High School's Air Force Junior ROTC program. Since I was ten years old, I have dreamed of becoming a pilot and serving in the armed forces. Joining AFJ ROTC was a natural step towards that goal, but I didn't realize then was how much this program would shape me. Looking back as a senior, I know it's prepared me for fu- my future in many ways I've never expected. Over the past three years, I've gained leadership experience, learned the importance of service, and developed discipline and standards expected by Air Force members. AFJ ROTC is not just about military training, it's about building citizens of character who live in, live with integrity and give back to their communities and strive for excellence. Our program offers incredible opportunities. Cadets often complete over one hundred hours of community service in one year. While our curriculum includes robotics, rocketry, drones, leadership, and physical fitness, these experiences challenge us, inspire us, and prepare us to succeed. Most importantly, AFJ ROTC has given me a community of young men and women who push one another to grow and lead. I am proud to be a part of the Corps that is building leaders of tomorrow. Thank you.
If, if I could, I'd also like to just recognize, uh, Major Sean Gibson before he leaves. Uh, somebody that doesn't want any credit, but if you've never had an opportunity to visit the ROTC program right there at Cabot High School, it, it's a premier standout program and, um, it's a lot to your, your leadership and dedication, so thank you for what you do.
Well, I was going to turn it over to Stacy Smith, but she was walked out, so.
No, Brigadier General.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Brigadier General Bridges, if you'd like to come up. So, uh, I'll introduce General Bridges, um, he, he oversees our National Guard. He's been a, a great partner, um, with us here at the Department of Education and, um, making sure that, uh, we're, we're, uh, in lockstep in making, in ensuring that our students know that if they have a passion to serve, there's a pathway for them.
That's right.
And, um, big supporter of the work we're doing and, and he's very visible and active a- a- across our schools. Um, in the state of Arkansas, we're really lucky for, for his leadership and guidance and we asked him to come in and share a little bit today about what it means to remember nine eleven in, in the state of Arkansas and maybe give an update about some of the wonderful initiatives that you're helping us implement across the state.
As you said earlier, thank you, Jacob, for the opportunity. Thank you for what you do for our state and our s- and our students and their parents, uh, for being on this board. Uh, and I think, uh, many of us can remember where we were on that day, nine eleven. Uh, and I was lieutenant, uh, at Camp Robinson, Amber. Uh, and so, I was a lieutenant at Camp Robinson. And, uh, and so, I, I was this conference planner for this national conference that was happening, uh, at Camp Robinson. And we had these leaders from all over the s- every state, um, fifty states, three territories, one district in Columbia. And the conference was starting at eight that morning, it was a Tuesday morning. And, and I'm running around getting things ready to go and there's these TVs in the back. And if you remember back then, the TVs weren't flat, uh, they were very thick, uh, tube TVs and it's the Today Show. And, you know, you see this one plane go into the building and I saw that and I'm running around and I said, "That's a terrible accident." Uh, and then we, these information briefings keep going in this conference. And the second plane hits and it's not an accident. And then the information briefs stop and, and then the FAA doesn't allow any air, air traffic over the country. And there's the National Guard Operations Officer that has to get back to DC. Uh, and FAA had, and he's here at Camp Robinson and he has to get clearance to fly back to DC from the FAA. And these other officers in their state National Guards have to get back to their states, uh, but there's no planes. Uh, and so, they get rental cars if they can and they drive back from Alaska, to Alaska, to Florida, to California and all those things. And we set up, uh, we set up this operations center there for the, a number of days and we're working things out there. And I was talking, incidentally, I was talking with Amber right before this. And before this day, twenty-four years ago, you could drive through Camp Robinson and it was often a cut-through where you would cut through and you would save five or ten minutes. Uh, you can't cut through anymore. Uh, and so, we have a TSA because of this day. Uh, we have, uh, more security because of this day. Uh, and I think it's a great remembrance, uh, that, uh, we, we need to do whatever it takes to secure, uh, our ability to make our own choices. Um, and so, uh, let us not forget, um, the importance of providing security for our citizens and the necessary, uh, the n- the necessary sacrifices that many, uh, have made to make that possible. Uh, I'm a fan of education, uh, I'm a fan of Jacob Oliva. Uh, and, uh, I believe that the most decisive thing that's going to increase the d- the prosperity of our state is an educated and skilled workforce. Uh, and, and so, I'm so thrilled about the great things that are happening in Arkansas as it relates to education. And when I talk to people, I often say that Arkansas punches above its weight. Uh, and we are punching above our weight in many, uh, in many ways. And so, I am excited to work with Jacob and the education professionals, uh, to provide opportunities for young men and women, uh, young students in Arkansas to achieve their dreams. I want them to achieve their dreams. We need them to achieve their dreams and those dreams need to be successful in the, in the areas that we need that for our, for our state. And I believe, uh, we are, uh, we're partnering in unique and powerful ways, uh, more so than ever before. Uh, we, we know the three E's, uh, I say the three o- three E's all the time. And we were in a cabinet meeting, uh, we were in a cabinet meeting back in the spring and the governor said, if, uh, she, she, I think she stole your quote here or something, but she said, "If we have students that are unable to enlist, enroll, or employ, then we're missing something." And, and so, I want our students to have the opportunity to choose their future. Uh, and, and I think enlistment can be a powerful pathway for a future. And that's full-time and it's part-time. I'm biased, but I'm in the Arkansas National Guard. Uh, and eighty percent of our nine thousand members are part-time and they have careers, uh, in industry. Uh, and, and so, we are contributing, uh, to every community in, in the state, all seventy-five counties. Uh, and what I want our organization to be is a pathway, uh, working with school districts and the Department of Education, uh, to enable a student, uh, to achieve their educational aspirations. Fifty to eighty percent of the members that join our, our organization do, do so for educational reasons. And then I want to educate them, have them complete their educational aspirations, train them in a military skill, we have over three hundred, uh, and, and then get them into a thriving career, ideally, in Arkansas business in the state of Arkansas. And, and so, uh, we have much to be proud of, uh, but we have much work to do. Uh, we're working specifically on, uh, increasing ASVAB testing and, and the scores of ASVAB. I just want to share this real quick. Uh, I say this, uh, you will not enlist in the military unless you pass the ASVAB. You will not pass the ASVAB unless you take the ASVAB. And so, uh, that's a pretty good statistic. Uh, and, and so, we are, we are renewing our emphasis on the ASVAB. Let me tell you something, uh, the ASVAB gives a student two unique things. It tells them, "What am I good at?" It tells them what I would like to do. And then it gives that two pieces of important information to a counselor. I've got a, I've got a daughter who's a sophomore and I ask her, "What does she want to do i- in the future?" And she gives me this, you know? I don't know what that sign language is yet, uh, and so, I'm trying to figure that out. And so, I think these two important pieces of information is, is critical for a counselor to be able to have an informed conversation with a student. And what's also exciting is that information then can be passed to a parent, like me, trying to guide my, uh, my child to their future. And here's another exciting part of that. What, how much do that, does that ASVAB cost? Zero. Uh, and so, the ASVAB is a career exploration program that gives the student these two things and it can be used for military entrance. I think that's important. Uh, and then, uh, so, we're, we're working, uh, with Jacob on that, uh, we've worked with Ross White on, uh, I think merit and distinction, uh, categorization. Then, and so, we're excited about that. Uh, one more point here and I just want to close. People think that joining the military is like your last resort before jail, okay? That's so far from the truth, okay? Thirty-one on the ASVAB is the minimum score of entrance. The average score in Arkansas is thirty-four point seven. That's equivalent to an ACT score of fifteen, okay? Uh, we have over three hundred jobs in the Arkansas National Guard. Uh, many of them, our students, are not, uh, scoring high enough to qualify for those jobs in the military. Uh, and so, we want to increase the number of students taking this test. Did I tell you it's free? Uh, and, and then we want to increase their score, uh, to give them options. You can be an aircraft mechanic in the Air National Guard at Little Rock Air Force Base and get a fifty thousand dollar enlistment bonus and then go to work for Dassan and Falcon in Little Rock, sixty-five thousand dollar salary at nineteen years of age, twenty-one, twenty-one, eighty-five thousand to be a mechanic. Okay? So, we have a range of opportunities where we can take these young men and women, give them values, leadership, discipline, and catapult them into life. I'll close with this, I feel like I want to be, I want to be an extension of this coach, teach, teacher-parent, uh, framework where we can take these young, young men and women into adulthood and help, help shepherd and structure into a structured environment. Uh, so, look forward to par- partnering with Jacob, uh, open to any and all ideas and we want our students to be successful. Thank you.
We salute you.
Please let us know what we can do to help you.
Thank you.
General Bridges, uh, I met you, um, at a Capitol Day event in Pocahontas. I'm just in, just as impressed now as I was then with your leadership and the things that you're doing for education and also the state of Arkansas. You spoke on a few things that are true and dear to my heart. Number one, safety.
Yeah.
Number two, workforce. And number three, teaching our kids. So, I salute you as well.
Thank you.
And, and I'll just say in closing, thank you, General Bridges, for being here. Um, it was important to us when we were looking at how we built on the momentum of Arkansas Learns and tying in to expanded pathway opportunities for students in access and combating the reality that not everybody's on a highway from twelfth grade to university. Well, that may be a highway for some students, it's not the highway for all students. And we know that students need different pathways, a one-size-fits-all approach doesn't meet the need of all. And when we say the three E's around enlistment, enrollment, employment, we've started having questions like, do we really have pathways for students that want to be enlisted? We heard from a, a fine young scholar today at Cabo High School. So, we're, we're look, we're going through those, um, pathways to make sure that they align with merit and distinction and we can recognize those students and, and, uh, and elevate them to the same level that we would for a student that may be on a pathway to university. This is just as prestigious, it's just as important, and it's just as right as it is for that child in that moment. So, your team has been phenomenal partners and we're, we're really, really fortunate to have the relationship that we have, so thank you as well.
Thank you very much.
All right, Stacy Smith. Welcome back.
I've been ready for this.
I was telling you, I was taking it a little personally, she hasn't been here for my first two meetings as chair, so, welcome back.
Good morning, Stacy Smith, Deputy Commissioner. Um, I don't know if you guys ever noticed, but usually after students perfor- perform, I always get to sneak out the back door and see them in the lobby. And what you guys don't get to see and what you didn't get to see today was when I walked out, the, 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 you know, the Cabot High School ROTC team was in here, they were poised, they were serious. Out there in the hallway, it was absolute excitement and pride at what they just did in here, right? I then got to go around the corner and see the two students who so proudly represented us today by singing the national anthem. The excitement and the pride was just over the top. And so, these moments are important. And these moments, when these kids, ten years from now, fifteen years now, twenty years from now, they'll talk about the moment that they got to come before the State Board of Education and present the colors or sing the anthem. So, thank you for giving them the opportunity to do that. Um, because this is putting what they're practicing and what they're doing and what they're instilling into reality, right? And instilling something deeper. So, thank you for giving them the opportunity, um, and the, the, the place to do that. So, this next bit, while I'm proud that my name is on this list for Arkansas Two-Fifty, I'm not the one who's done the work, all right? Um, there's. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Ooh, it's been hard. I mean, you wouldn't believe how many a- late night hours that I've been up here. Um, what I get to do though is I get the honor and privilege to introduce you to, um, some folks who have been really deep into this work. The first person I want to introduce to you is our new Assistant Commissioner for Educator Effectiveness and Licenseur, Dr. Brandy Benton. Brandy, come on up, please. I want to tell you a little bit about Brandy. First off, what is still to have her with us at the Department of Education. She is a recognized leader in education across the state. Prior to coming to the department, she was the Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction at our partner, Virtual Arkansas. Um, Virtual Arkansas actually started as a virtual school throughout the state to be able to provide effective educators, quality educators, access to courses all throughout the state, um, that couldn't get those classes. And so, that was a state-funded project and land, and Brandy, in the last few years, has been a part of that team, actually created, um, helped create a military pathway through that program, again, reaching schools that don't have the opportunity to have those pathways on their own. So, we are excited to have her here. She also was the Associate Provost at Henderson State University. So, not only does she have this vast experience in curriculum instruction, um, on the virtual side, but she also has higher ed experience. But she started off as a middle school teacher, right? Um, so, she is a national presence plus a state presence, so we are very excited to have her here. Um, also want to recognize Amber Purnik, Amber, stand up. She is our director that works in Learning Services, Director of Humanities, and she has a team with her today, Rhonda, Isaac, Trey, and Kevin, who have all been working on this project. And so, not to steal any more of their thunder or lightning, I'm going to turn it over to them. Um, but they have spent many hours working on this cross-agency collaboration. Dr. Benton?
Man, she made me sound like I'm somebody, but I feel really humbled to get to stand before you guys today. And I know at some point in the future, maybe the presentation won't be as exciting as what we're getting to share today. But, again, I'm Brandy Benton, it was nice to meet everyone earlier and, you know, making a personal, um, acquaintance there. I have Amber Purnik with me, my colleague from Learning Services, who's really spearheading this project. But about a year ago, I called Amber and said, "I've got an idea. I hear there's this new Arkansas commission to help celebrate the America Two-Fifty. I think we could collaborate. Virtual Arkansas had the resources, the systems, the subject matter experts to help Desi build a diri- a digital curriculum that we could push out across the state." Um, and so, she said, "Let's talk about that." And we worked together to develop a charter for the project and to build out the framework for a series of, uh, thematic, uh, curriculum resources that schools, students, and families could access at no cost throughout the year. And so, we've had so much fun. My role has changed, I'm no longer with Virtual Arkansas. I do want to give them a shout-out in the back. Our Executive Director, John Ashworth, is here. And Paula McDougald is actually the project manager on the Virtual Arkansas side. So, they came today to hear about how we're going to share with you all these resources. Um, I want to give a little bit of background on this project for those of you who, who may not be familiar. Click her, yeah. Thank you. Um, so, if you're not familiar, um, in twenty sixteen, the U.S. Semi-Quintcentennial, and I challenge you to say that five times fast, commission was created by Congress to coordinate and plan events leading to next year's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of our Declaration of Independence. Um, and then in twenty twenty-four, Governor Sanders appointed the Arkansas Two-Fifty Commission. And that's chaired by Sher- by Secretary Shay Lewis with Parks, Recreation, and Tourism. And underneath Arkansas's commission umbrella, there are several subcommittees, including the Education Subcommittee, to which Amber and I serve. Um, Dr. Ken Warden, um, Department of Higher Ed, is actually, is actually our lead for that project. What we're going to share with you all today, there are lots of projects going on underneath the Education Subcommittee. We're going to share the projects that Desi and Virtual Arkansas and some other partners have worked on together. Let me click. Um, we have created, like I said, a series of thematic curriculum resources, high-quality instructional materials that are going to be available to, again, those schools, educators, families, and students across the state. When we created really this charter and this vision for this, we wanted to ensure that it was aligned with the Arkansas Department of Education's, um, vision, that whatever we would create would position our students to engage in two-hundred-and-fifty years of America's story by preparing, supporting, and, and inspiring their future successes as future leaders in our state and nation. But I really want to give Amber the opportunity to really showcase the materials that we've created. And at present, we have the full framework, um, that, that is mapped out, but you're going to be able to preview August and September's resources that are already publicly available to our students in our state. So, Amber, at this time, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to click for you?
I would love it, thank you so much. Well, good morning. My name is Amber Purnik in the Office of Learning Services. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about this amazing work. Um, you know, we talk about the charter, we live by that charter. It is, it is our daily work, but I think what is more important is it's, we, we are putting out a phenomenal product. But what you're, what, what you don't see behind the scenes is the work and the dedication and the discipline of our teams. Like, they are doing brilliant work and we are so proud to just get to be a part of it, so.
We not have to brag on Arkansas because to our knowledge, no other state has created a resource set to the extent that Arkansas has, and that includes states like Virginia and, you know, the other twelve initial colonies. But Arkansas really is leading in this way and we're getting some national attention around the products.
No pressure, Brandy, no pressure. All right. All right, so let's talk first about our Student Experience Arc. Uh, this really defines how our learners will engage with ACA Two-Fifty, moving from the past into the future in a very purposeful way. First, our students are going to connect with our nation's history by exploring the people, places, and industries in Arkansas that shaped America's story and preserved its shared heritage. Next, they celebrate Arkansas's unique story through the time-honored traditions, enduring values, and artistic expressions that reflect the strength and spirit of our state and our nation. And finally, contribute to our state's future success, whether through enrollment in post-secondary education, pursuit of high-wage, high-demand employment, or enlistment in service to community and country. To make this Student Experience Arc tangible, we've designed monthly themes that bring Arkansas's story to life through STEM and the humanities. So, in August, we started with the Natural State Wonders, highlighting our geography and biodiversity. And then in September, which content was released just last week, it features resources about Arkansas's journey to statehood. about Arkansas's journey to statehood. And also includes a Founder's Museum with guidance for commemorating Constitution Day and Celebrate Freedom Week. In October, we are going to focus on Arkansas's indigenous heritage, including the Kwapah, Osage, and Caddo tribes and the region's role in early exploration. And in November, we honor the duty, sacrifice, and enduring contributions to our communities of Arkansas's military legacy and heroes. Each theme provides ready-to-use, standards-aligned, high-quality materials that are designed to open doors to community and family engagement. And these resources are going to be organized by GradeBand, K4, 58, and 916. So, each month, students will take part in thematic expeditions to connect, celebrate, and contribute to Arkansas's story. But our expeditions aren't just lesson plans. The MAP Expedition will provide ready-to-use, flexible learning experiences designed for classrooms, community settings, and even at home. So, teachers can lead them directly, or students across all learning systems can drive their own exploration, whether in-person, hybrid, or virtual settings. Our Compass Expedition is built on high-quality learning and resources. That includes teacher guidance for seamless integration into existing high-quality instructional materials that are already being used in the classroom. The Navigator, the Navigator Expedition is a partnership between DESI and schools, uh, where they are given opportunities to enrich learning and celebrate, um, our heritage. Whether it is through curated materials, unique projects, or student recognitions, um, you might already know about the Ornament Project. Right now, we have, we are inviting every district across the state to participate and send us an ornament. And we are going to display that at the Capitol during the holidays. And so, just different ways for our schools to engage with one another and celebrate this milestone. This ensures that learning is not an extra, but is directly aligned to what is already happening in our schools. For students grade six through 12, the Express Pass extends into community service. So, these are opportunities for civic engagement and real impact in their local communities. For kindergarten through fifth grade students, the Passport Expedition encourages families to explore Arkansas heritage together through visiting museums, historic sites, and parks, many of which are found within their own counties. This makes the learning accessible no matter where our families live. Arkansas has a unique opportunity, not just to commemorate history, but to shape how the next generation understands it and carries it forward. This work is only possible because of our strategic partners, along with districts, families, and community organizations across the state who are already helping us bring Arkansas's story to life. To all of you, we say, "Thank you." Together, we will ensure that students don't just learn about history, but they live it, they celebrate it, and they help shape the next 250 years. What we have created for Arkansas, we truly are transforming our state to lead the nation in student-focused education. This work would not have been possible without these partners on the screen. And again, a huge thank you to the Humanities Team for their vision and dedication to bringing Arkansas Celebrates America 250 to life, and to the Design and Development Team at Virtual Arkansas for making that vision come to life through the interactive curriculum dashboard. All right. So, we are inviting you, the leaders across our state, to help amplify this historic moment. Celebrate by lifting up local stories, traditions, and events. Share them widely using hashtag ACA250 so every community sees themselves in this journey. Connect by celebrating and collaborating with schools on expeditions and civic projects that bring history off the page and into life. Contribute by ensuring that every Arkansas student has a chance to take part, whether that's through access, opportunities, or encouragement. To follow our progress, explore resources, or get involved, visit America250 ade dot Arkansas dot gov, or you can scan that QR code. Uh, thank you for your leadership and support in making this once-in-a-generation celebration a reality. We welcome any questions you have at this time.
Well, we certainly want to fan this flame.
Absolutely.
Uh, can you share with us how the, uh, superintendents have been invited in and how they've been motivated to push this opportunity through their district?
Sure. So, our, our main mode of communication is through the Commissioner's Memo. And so, right now, since this is, we really are in the early stages of launching this program, um, the word is getting out, and it is getting out very quickly.
Good.
Um, but through Commissioner's Memos, through press releases, we are doing our best to spread the word. And, um, monthly, we are releasing content. And so, we invite our superintendents to be watching for those Commissioner's Memos. And the resources are going to be onto, on the website, loaded in the dashboard, ready to use. Um, most of these templates are pretty turnkey.
We're also doing a social media push. There's a Facebook page, Instagram page, um, that has over a thousand followers.
That's right, it does. Yes, it's, it's.
It's picked up a lot of followers in just the last few weeks. Um, and we are keeping that updated as well. So, it stays top of the, our followers.
Well, thank you for this. And thank you too for putting it together behind the scenes. I will say that the Chambers of Commerce should really hear about this, if they haven't already. I think they could be a good partner in this.
Okay, so in that same vein, tagging on to the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, you know, how do you see industry kind of adding content to this? Because I think about a lot of the industries that we have in our state, they have a lot of rich history to contribute. And whenever I read on the, you know, host events and collaborate on the journey, I mean, I, I, I work at a, I'll say, I'll call it a historic institution, Simmons Bank. We've been in, at, at, in Arkansas for a very long time. And, you know, so I think we've contributed to the history of the state, uh, as do so many other, uh, companies. So, how do you see them partnering or, uh, on this program?
The Chambers of Commerce have their own committee that they're engaged in. So, they're planning events throughout the state of Arkansas. They have their own calendar, they have their own events, and they have their own activities planned. And all of that work is being compiled into, um, a resource set list that will be on one website. That's already out there and published. Remind me, who is managing that website?
Um, the Department of Heritage.
The Department of Heritage.
The Department of Heritage, yes.
They're hosting it, and all of the other subcommittees are sending content to them. So, there's one primary hub that anyone in Arkansas or beyond can go to to see all of the events and all of the resources, um, that we're going to be rolling out throughout the course of the year leading up until the Fourth of July next summer.
Okay, thank you.
So, if, if I could, um, one, thank you for that update. And I think when, when you're asking about how do we make sure industry knows, school districts know, this is one of the goals of today is, is to keep raising awareness, because this is phenomenal work. And, um, we're going to hear from our educational cooperatives a little bit later today. That, that's probably another pathway we want to tap into and make sure that, um, we get it right. Because this is, I think you said, once-in-a-generational, uh, lifetime experience. But, but I, I can tell you, when Governor Sanders signed the executive order to put in the America 250 Arkansas Commission, and education was named part of that, right? Like, that we want to do that. When we went back to the team and said, "Hey, let's, let's think of some things that we could do to make sure we're, we're raising awareness to celebrating 250 years," right? I mean, my thoughts were like, "Okay, maybe we'll have a coloring contest," or like, uh, like, the work that they came up with, like.
Secretariat is coming.
But, but when I tell, like, an essay writing contest, like, that's, that's what other states are thinking. And the vision and imagination that this team came up with to really make this come alive is extraordinary. And, um, there, there is a famous educator for a while named Bill Daggett that used to always talk about, "You have to have rigor, relevance, and relationships in your lessons." And they have embraced that. Like, it's aligned with the standard, so it's not a burden to the teachers. This is content and history we know we should be teaching. And it's relevant. Kids are going to be able to see how Arkansas contributed to the nation and how their community is part of the action that shapes that story. And, um, it, it's just so phenomenal. And, and students are going to build those relationships, not only with their peers and, and their schools, but with their community. And that is so important, that students are connected to, um, our history as we're honoring the past and looking at where they are in shaping our future in the present. So, I, I, I can't, um, thank this team enough. This, this has far exceeded, I think, anybody's, um, vision or, um, ideas. And it just keeps getting better every time they meet. So, I actually told them earlier, I was like, "Once this is done, you're, we're, you're not going to be the department's, like, coordinator of all special projects or all crazy ideas." So, we're going to keep this going. No, no pressure.
Will you keep us posted on events and things?
Absolutely.
Be invited to, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Secretary, I wanted to say, since you're good friends with Secretary McMahon, that I'm sure she would be interested in learning what Arkansas is leading in this endeavor for the, for the other states.
We will definitely be able to share that with our federal partners. This is, this is by far a best practice that can be shared.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Great work. Okay. Before we, is there anything else that I'm missing? I was going to introduce our new board member.
Yeah, I was going to say, I knew, no, I was going to ask, uh, we had a lot of introductions, but there's a new face on the board.
There is a new face.
Before we get into action, I think, um, we should give him the proper welcome that he deserves.
I was going to say, for sure. So, for those of you that have not had the chance, Dr. Erin Abbott is our newest board member. He is with me representing the fourth congressional district. So, he is from Springville. He replaces Mrs. Rollins. Um, and we are so excited to have you here. If you've not read his background, I would encourage you to do so.
Sure.
Or you can share it. I'm not, I don't want to put you on the spot.
This is the first meeting. We have to put him on the spot.
But I just wanted to make sure that we welcomed you. And also, Diane Zook was the chair when I first came on. And she was like, "There are no stupid questions. So, please, you are the only one that is responsible for your vote. So, feel free to ask whatever questions you need to feel comfortable with whatever you do. And your first day is just as important as your last. And you will be here for seven years. So, get very comfortable." So, anything, any words from you?
I'll, I'll just say, "Thank you. I do consider it an incredible privilege to be able to serve the state, uh, in this way. Um, and I'm just, I'm excited to be here for seven years."
Well, and, and we want to say thank you and for having the courage to serve, right? I mean, it takes leadership to be out. And, and, and I may be biased in thinking that the decisions we make are, for me, the most important decisions we can make as a governing body for students. And it's real impact and it's, um, real purposeful. And, um, to Chair Woods's point is, we want to get it right. And this isn't, um, a board that we want to be just kind of passive. We want to be engaged. And there's going to be times where we have meetings, there's going to be times we have workshops, we're going to seek input. Because you are a reflection of your region of the state and, as well as, um, all of the state, but a voice for our students and a champion. And, um, whenever we can welcome new board members, it's, it's a privilege to have you. And we're, we're really blessed that you're here. And we look forward to getting to know you and work with you better.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
With that, does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Nope? Okay. We will move on to our action agenda. First thing we have is Ms. Stacy Smith with the Education Service Cooperative Annual Reports. Just a little light reading, just a little light reading.
That's right. See, I knew you'd been missing me. So, I just had my name on the agenda like several times this morning. That's right. Um, good morning. So, these are the Educational Service Cooperatives Annual Reports. Um, they're really compliance reports, all right? They are dictated in law what exactly has to be in the report. Um, I do want to kind of just outline some of the things that are required. The policies and the procedures for the educational cooperatives, um, as far as overseeing the administrative program expenditures, um, a record of employment policies and practices. They have to provide data on the race and sex of each person who is employed there. They have to provide, um, information on who sought employment there. They have to say who's related. So, you can see, there's a lot of things about hiring and funding and administrative pieces. Um, a report of receipts and expenditures. Um, so those are the compliance pieces that have to be within the report. Then they also have the ability to add additional information within their reports to talk about more of their supports and their services that they provided. Um, all of 15 of the educational regional coop, regional service cooperatives, um, submitted their reports in time. And those have been added to, um, the agenda just for approval that those reports have been submitted. Um, we do have three, um, of the cooperative directors here with us today. Um, and I'm going to ask, Karen, I think they, they sacrificed you, is that correct? Come on down. Um, but I do want to note, over especially this last year, um, with the intense focus on discussion around what is the role and responsibility of the cooperatives. And in this era of how we are transforming education in our state, how does their role change? And what does that look like? Um, they have been great partners to walk alongside of us, um, especially in areas and districts in which concerns have been raised. Um, they have played an integral role coming to the table, assisting us with, like, getting into details on the books, the records. Um, they have assisted now in providing the superintendent and administrative mentoring for the state. And again, having very specific conversations with Secretary Aliva, myself, on what is the expectation? What's the future? What does that look like going forward? Um, they have been, um, a key partner in us rolling out our new Arkansas app, which we are getting national attention for. Um, this is something that we have both served on panels for nationally, about people wanting to know, "How did Arkansas take 17 state and federal applications and rolled them into one that provides a district strategic plan?" Our cooperative partners have been walking hand in hand with us on that and assisting their school districts in actually creating a real district plan that aligns with the priorities that we have for our state. So, I'm going to ask Karen Kay if she would give a little bit more of an overview. And Matt, I know you've been a part of this, but I'm going to let Karen Kay talk about their role in that today and kind of how they've walked districts through that.
Thank you for that, Stacy. I'm Karen Kay McMahon. I'm the Director at the South Central Service Cooperative located in Camden. Um, there are 15 cooperatives around the state. And this is a big year for us because this is our 40th year in existence. And some people forget that, that we've been in existence for 40 years. And I can tell you, this is my 13th year at the Co-op, and it's my 35th year in education. And now, more than ever, we feel like we're a valued partner with the department. And all of our department, uh, all of our.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. They just want you to pull the microphone closer.
Oh, closer. I didn't want to be too loud. Okay. I didn't want to be on, I didn't want to be too loud.
No, you have important things to say.
You know, the teacher voice, the teacher voice.
Here's your teacher, your mom voice, either one.
Yes, either one. So, like I was saying, it's our 40th year. It's my 13th year as a, a Co-op employee. I've served as a Teacher Center Coordinator and now as a Director for five years. And I can tell you now, more than ever, we feel like we're more of a valued partner. And several years ago, we just made a, a commitment as cooperatives to be the yes, yes. We're going to say yes. So, when the department comes and asks, "Will you partner with us?" Yes, we're going to partner with you. "We need you to do this?" Yes, we're going to partner with you. Um, and so, the AR app was one of those decisions that was made just last October. Uh, the DESI leadership team came to our retreat where we were working on the work. And they asked, "We need some help. We need some support with that." And we said yes. And it was building the plane as we were flying the plane, but we did it. And we've had a very successful year. And, um, Matt can attest to that, because Matt and I have been, um, the leaders on this committee. But let me tell you just a little bit about that. So, we said yes, we formed a committee. I was the chairperson for that committee. Um, our cooperatives have developed modules to train, bring in the school districts and, uh, train them and help them be critical thinking partners, to ask the hard questions, to push them to not just the AR app be a, um, compliance piece, but actually to truly drive the work in the district. So, that started in January. And each month, we had a different module or a different piece of that AR app that we tackled. We would, um, communicate with our districts and say, "Hey, this month, we're working on, um, state grants," right? Uh, "This month, we're working on, um, the leadership part and the, and the learning services part. These are the people that you need to bring to your team." And so, every month, a different team from that district would come and engage in the work. And then there would be work time that would be allowed for them to just sit and work quietly. Sometimes it's very busy in the district, and they just need a good quiet place to sit and work and think with their team, right? And so, in May, May was like cleanup month. And we were trying to make sure everybody had all their i's dotted and their t's crossed. And they were able to submit. Now, Matt and I talked quite a bit. Matt, how'd it go? You know, we are ahead of schedule. Uh, he and I talked, I think it was last week, we're ahead of schedule. Um, these have to be on their website by October the first. And we're way ahead of schedule. Like, last week or so, we had like six or seven that we were just trying to finalize. And, uh, we're not- And we're not compliance, we're not the hammer, but we are the critical friend and we are the thinking partner. And we spend a lot of time providing feedback back to the district. You know, when you're at the cooperative and we have all these employees that are in all facets of district leadership, we know sometimes more of what they're doing and how to word it and how to tell their story about their strategic plan than sometimes some of the team members do, depending on if they're new employees, new principals, new federal programs coordinators and such. And so we provided that feedback. Matt can attest to how many hours we've saved them as far as phone calls and how much easier the process of the state actually approving those plans so that we're way ahead of schedule in order to get those back to the district so that they have their public-facing strategic plan and it can be uploaded to their website so that their community and their stakeholders know more about that plan.
So let me, before you give me questions, if I could, I just want to paint the picture of what this really means. So if you think about the way we get different categoricals and state budgets or different revenue streams and pots of money that comes from the federal program, oftentimes those dollars are associated with a program. So you might see an allocation, say, for Title I students that are in lower socioeconomic status or a Title III allocation that's for students that are earning English as a second language. Well, we had seventeen of those different programs. Each district had to fill out a different application for every one of those programs. And then every one of those programs had to write their own strategic goals and plans and how they're going to meet the expectations of that program. And then this is what would always drove me nuts, especially like if I was in a district. We would require a needs assessment on the data that we would get from the state, right? Like, so we have to tell you what the data you gave us is and what it means and how we're going to improve it. So it was just levels of bureaucracy and red tape that never once asked questions on how can we better support students. So when we went to the team and said, "This is so much work", and it created silos because what happened is the person that was over their one program and their grant never talked to the person next door to them about, "Hey, what are you writing in your program in your own grant?" And then you wonder why we have competing priorities happening in schools and in districts and we're not seeing rapid improvement in student performance. So when we went to the team and said, "We're going to change all of this and we're going to say, 'You're going to fill out a district strategic plan. And when you write those goals based on the data, on what methods or what students you want to target, which levels of subject area, which grade levels, we have all that information, you can write one plan and we're going to have one needs assessment and we're going to allow you to braid funding to support that plan." And then we said to the cooperatives, "To help us get this across the finish line, so one, that districts understand, we're going to reimagine a new way of work that's going to be focused on moving the metric and needle on student outcomes and we're going to support them with thinking differently. But two, have a conversation about their specific role in helping them achieve that goal." Because we know that a one-size-fits-all approach doesn't meet the needs of our students and families. For a co-op that serves in multiple districts, they can't have a one-size-fits-all approach as well. So this gives them a seat at the table with planning, with data on how they're going to individually support a district. So when you talk about how we're really moving the needle across the state and having different levels of conversations that we've ever had before, the educational cooperatives being invited to have a seat at that table and be part of that planning process is making sure that we're efficient, it's making sure that we're purposeful, and then there's somebody that's going to help make sure that there's follow-through happening on behalf of the district. And when we say, it's easy to say, you know, "We consolidated all these applications", right? It sounds great. We have a one app and it creates efficiency. But this was a lot of work and this is a big deal. And I feel like we are really, as we've laid the foundation through Arkansas learns, getting the systems aligned and early learning through K-12, building on access and pathways, the unified coordinated progress monitoring system and data, they're now able to take the snapshot of data that we're, I don't know if the window is still open, but our first round of progress monitoring data, we're able to give them access to that data now, which they didn't have before, so that they can go back with their districts and say, "Okay, this is what we planned in the summer. We've got real-time decisions to make. We're not going to wait till the end of the year and figure out what we should have done. We're not playing defense anymore. We're on offense. And this is better support for teachers, this is better support for students, and this is a better support for families." So I know we just shared like a high-level overview, but our way of work and the role of a co-op has been strengthened. And we're really grateful for their willingness to be that partner and say, "Yes, like, let's reimagine our role. Let's make these right investments. Let's be coordinated in our approach."
No, I'm so glad you brought up the real-time data piece, right? And so you have boots on the ground, real-time. They can see what, so if the district isn't looking at their data, they can look at the data and call and say, "Hey, we need to have a conversation. We just saw what your results are. Let's go back to the plan. Are you implementing? Are you doing what you said you were going to do? Do we need to adjust something?" Another thing from the state, it allows us to ask very specific questions to districts in the plan that makes sure and pushes districts towards the direction we're going. For example, you've heard a lot this morning about the pathways, the career pathways, and enlistment's one of those, right? This last year on the, our app, we asked districts to tell us, "What is your high wage, high demand, or high growth?", I'm not sure which is the words, "About your H2 pathways, what are you offering in your district and what are your outcomes?", right? So it allows us to come back and say, "What are the districts offering and are they having outcomes?" I anticipate next year, you're going to see a question on, "How are you providing the opportunity for enlistment opportunities in your district?" And the districts have to thoughtfully think about that. And if they don't have a path, our co-op partners will be ready to help them say, "Okay, you're not offering something now. Let's talk about what you could do. Let's talk about who we can connect you with." So the individual school district doesn't have to know everything about everyone, but our co-op partners are strategically aware of what the questions are, where we're trying to lead people, and they can point them to the adequate and necessary resources they need to be able to implement. Okay? So I'm going to stop there on the AR app and go back to the cooperative annual reports and see if you guys have any questions for them on their annual reports.
I don't have the app on my phone. Should I have the app on my phone?
So it's not an app like you would have on your phone. It's an application. When we say AR app, it's really the Arkansas application.
Okay, thank you.
But if you want me to make you an app, I'd do one. Dr. Arnold, if you ask for it, we could probably come up with something.
I'm still learning here, so thank you.
Dr. Abbott, you're new. Don't ask. No, never, never.
Okay, so I need some education here also. So when I look at the way the co-ops are organized, right? So it seems like there's board of directors who is made up of the districts who they serve. So I mean, this can kind of create, does it create like a circular accountability issue? How do they, how can the co-op say, like in your example, "Hey, I see you're missing the mark on this", but then their board can say, "That's okay"? I mean, like, does that happen?
Absolutely, it happens. And that is one of the conversations we've been having with co-ops this year, okay? So their board and the organization of how educational cooperatives are set up throughout the state is legislated.
Okay.
Okay? That is in legislation of how that's done. We actually, there was a bill that ran late in session about reorganizing some of the structure piece. It did not, it was late in the session and it did not make it through. But those have been real conversations. And when we've talked about, for example, this strategic application, we've actually had emails saying, "Hey, why are they telling us what to do?", right? What's their role in this? How does that look? But on the flip side, we've also heard from superintendents at times who say, "We're not getting what we need from our co-op", right? And so our role in this conversation of being very direct both ways with our cooperative partners and with our school district partners about what is their role. And we are having changing conversations right now about what is the role of these service cooperatives, right? And the word "service" was very intentionally put in legislation. And when you read legislation about what their role is, it is to support their school districts. And the law says that districts can make an option of whether or not they participate. Like, that's in there. The law that did pass this last year was around the district strategic plan, the AR app, that says that co-ops will be involved in providing oversight, guidance, and monitoring of that plan. So that's the first time you're actually seeing a little bit of accountability written into law about their role. These folks, most of your directors and folks you see at the cooperative level, a lot of them are previous superintendents, administrators in that region, right? So most of them, when they're going through the interview process for that role, they're interviewing with their peers, right, of being selected. And so there is pressure there, right? But I believe that the majority of our school districts and superintendents in our state want to be good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I believe that. And I believe if our co-op directors are good and valuable, they know how to provide constructive criticism and support and direct conversation to their leaders. And we're trying to create opportunities and avenues for them to do that. They now have access for the first time ever of that local data. I would hope a superintendent would be like, "Thank you for calling me. I haven't had a chance to look at my second grade data to that level. I didn't realize we had a problem. Thank you for bringing this to my attention. Great, you're going to help me organize a meeting to bring people to the table?" I think most people are going to appreciate that. When they get resistance, which we get resistance when we get called in as well, right? That's our role sometimes to push a little bit harder. You've seen us do that with Blyville. You've seen us do that with Watson Chapel. There are times when the state is the one walking in, making those changes. But as in Blyville, we have pulled the co-op alongside with us and they have spent more hours probably than some of our team members right there with us, helping us clean it up. And they've established now deeper relationships, deeper mutual respect about what's happening in the district and at the co-op and how they can support than I think we've seen before. So I think we're on the right path, but we still have a long ways to go. So it's a good question.
And I, just to add to some of Stacy's comments on your question, it's the right question. And when your governing body dictates the future of your co-op, you tend to be more customer service focused, right? Like, when we're supporting districts, it was about customer service. And I know when I got here, I got asked a lot by legislators, by this board, by community stakeholders, "What's the purpose of a co-op?", right? Like, why do we need them? Why do we have them? So I always want to make sure that I'm clear. I believe in the co-ops. We have a lot of districts, especially some of our smaller districts, our isolated districts, they need the support, the direct support from the co-ops because there's a, there's a, you hate to use like a business side of the school, but there's an economy of scale on the services and support that you can provide at the district level. And they have to rely on a network of their peers to make them better. But the conversations that I had with the co-ops, because I'm not afraid to have honest conversations and I'm sure they'll tell you that I came into some of those meetings and I didn't make a whole lot of friends, is like, "I'm all about supporting you on the co-ops, but we're going to hold you accountable because we're not going to just have co-ops that have co-ops to exist", right? The co-ops need to be able to prove that they're providing value and input into their testament from day one. And we didn't just arrive. This has been a two-year conversation and journey from day one there. Like, "We would love to be held accountable. We want to better support districts, but there's some things that really do prevent us from doing that. We don't have access. We don't have authority. We need to make sure we have your support." They're not afraid to have those tough conversations, but they're not going to just do them if there's no support. And so we've built the system and structure and it was codified in law that says that they're going to help have some oversight and compliance, that that is part of their role. And we're going to be standing with them to make sure that those barriers are removed. And if they are getting pushed back, then I get that call. And I don't think superintendents want me showing up saying, "Why are you not playing nice in the same sandbox?" This is not an us-first in. This is about a community in a state being efficient with resources to serve students. And if we're doing that, we're going to keep moving the needle. If there's places where they refuse to do that because we have adults that want to protect the system and not work with a co-op and not work with the state, y'all are going to be having a meeting in their school district really soon.
Well, and another thing that Access, Arkansas Access that just passed, did letter grades for districts, but also did letter grades for co-ops.
Good.
Right? And so as a region, school districts now as a whole, as a board, they have to look at what their letter grade is as a board.
It is going to be based on student performance.
From their districts.
From their districts.
So it's a regional kind of view?
So if you're a district, how are you performing versus your district? And now that's the whole, like, where do we need to provide support? And how are we thinking about this as a local board for our regional cooperative?
Right, so it's an all buts for us.
All but, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to add to Secretary's point. You know, when I think about rural school areas and smaller districts, I think co-ops are critical.
They are.
You know, obviously because of, you know, likeable resources and things like that in those areas, I think it's necessary and I think that co-op's presence is certainly needed.
So is the motion to accept the reports?
So I would ask for a motion to accept the reports, please.
All right. Move to accept. Motion was made by Ms. Hunter to accept the co-op report. Seconded by Dr. Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you so much. And I still think you're on my agenda.
I am. I didn't want to leave you today.
No, that's fine.
All right, next item on the agenda is update to the ABC Arkansas Better Chance Program renewal grants. We have two. So you've seen the comprehensive list before, but we have two changes on that list. One is the Truman School District. We're going to add ten slots, four slots where we turn from another program. This puts Truman at an even number of a hundred ABC slots. If you'll remember, this last year, we started doing this where we went out and looked really at collecting numbers through our local leads, getting an accurate child count of where were there deserts in our state, who really needed more support. That is what informs where we place our slots. So there is, we have a list created. The next one is the Viola Little Longhorns Preschool is going to be added and we're going to have twenty new slots there. What happened there is you had a Head Start program close and there are no other programs. And so this is a brand-new program that's being added and they're going to get the additional twenty slots there. So those are the two changes. I would ask for a motion to accept those two changes on the ABC program.
Questions? This is where we rely on Ms. Keener, usually. She's reviewed, okay. Do you know what her take is?
No, I mean, I think she recognizes, especially when you look at the areas themselves, when we have, like in Truman, we looked at the total area, like how many total programs are there? In Truman, there's really only five programs. Of those five programs, two of them are EIDT centers, which focus more on students with disabilities, right? And so those are not open and accessible for all kids. There is a lack of the number of spots or slots available to them. So again, we're adding ten seats, right? They have a program. You know, most of your classrooms have about twenty kids with a certain ratio of adults in there, right? So this allows them to kind of even that out and they're in need of those spots. The second place, again, that is an area that a Head Start program just closed, all right? There is a need for slots in that area. And so again, being able to open and place a new center there to be able to fill in that hole, again, looking at our data and that's determining where slots are being placed. So in whole, when we look at, and I have a spreadsheet back there that I didn't bring up here, but we are handing out twenty-two thousand ABC slots, right? So right now, I'm talking to you about thirty of those twenty-two thousand. You've already approved where most of the slots in the state are, okay? But every time we have a change where a school district, not a school district, but any program gives up slots, or we look at the data and say, "We've given you slots. You haven't filled them", we pull them back and we give them to someone else, all right? The way these are set up though is- The way these are set up though is every time we make a change, we have to bring this to that board, to the board, okay? So today we're talking about thirty slots. And I believe Ms. Keener's in support, but at the same time, I don't wanna say.
Sure.
Yeah.
So are we going from ninety to a hundred in Truman or from a hundred to a hundred and ten?
No, they're, they're moving up to a hundred slots. So they've got, they've had ninety now.
They've had ninety.
They're getting an additional ten.
Okay, to go up to the hundred.
Yes, and the other one is getting twenty, which is pretty much a classroom.
Well, I would move that the Office of Early Childhood, um, make the, uh, requested changes for Truman and Viola.
Alright, I have a motion by Dr. Arnold, do I have a second? Second? Second by Ms. Hunter, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, then that is all from our action agenda, right? Okay. Does anybody have any changes to consent, anything they wanna pull? Alright, none, then I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion to accept consent agenda.
I have a first by Mr. Henderson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Abbott, all in favor say aye. Had a big motion right there.
That's my first.
First by Mr. Henderson, a second by Dr. Abbott, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. And that will take us to new business. Any new business? Okay. Do y'all wanna break or keep going? Well, let's take, let's take like a five-minute break, so she can work her stuff, we'll come right back, about ten twenty.
Good.
Alright. Did I, thank you.
Uh, they call it a bitch.
We'll go ahead and re-campaign.
He did take your rules.
We're gonna go ahead and call it back. Um, I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna move public comment up so that you don't, we have a lot of reports today. Are y'all available to talk now? Does that work? I know she's on the phone. Well, we'll start with you. Hey, we're gonna move public comments up so you don't have to sit through all of our reports. Is that okay? Alright, cool. Alright. Julius, you're listed first, would you like to come?
Good morning, Arkansas State Board members, Secretary Olivia, Chairperson Adrian Woods, all others present. I am Julius Wright, Paimon School District stakeholder, who has been afforded the opportunity to present public comments for the past almost three-plus years at the State Board of Education. We have always prepared my comments prior to the meeting to enable me to respectfully within the protocol that was established. I, at times, I feel that my words were not taken into consideration. But, this brings into the recent legislation session, I feel that some of my comments were engrafted in the laws that were passed. We were pleased to review Senate Bill Ninety that would enable me, as well as others, to be afforded the opportunity to present public comments on any matter that is within the powers and duties of the Board of Directors, as provided at each of our district boards of directors' meetings. At the recent, recent August Paimon School District Board of Directors meeting, we felt that this was not the case. The opportunity to present public comments was met with prior comments that went beyond the scope of Senate Bill Ninety. We feel that the comments were to deter open comments, to censor and to incite hostility, and to prevent future comments. We have petitioned you for our democratically elected board and the election of all seven board members since our return to local control. And we feel that our public comments would have been handled differently. Thank you for allowing me to have public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Ms. Wright?
I see all these smiling faces. Wow, good morning, Arkansas State Board members, Secretary Olivia, Chairperson Adrian Woods and all others present. I am Charlene Wright, a Paimon School District stakeholder, who has also been afforded the opportunity to present public comment for the past almost three-plus years at the State Board of Education. We have reviewed and accepted Act 503 that would enable us, as Secretary Olivia said previously, to play in the sandbox. As well as others to be afforded the opportunity to elect four board of directors in spring twenty-twenty-six. Reviewing your transcript from September twenty-twenty-three, when the district was released to local control, board member Cedric Wright wanted them to do a five-year term for continuity and you granted their desire despite there being an appointed limited board in Act 633. Act 503 allows the appointed limited board, the five-year which they desired, means that their expirations would end at twenty-twenty-eight in conjunction with Act 503 and the Arkansas School Boards Association, Act 503 of twenty-twenty-five Board Election Guide. The Paimon School District Board and administration is denying us transparency in which they will not voluntarily communicate the zoning maps, publish dates of zones that would be elected in March twenty-twenty-six, again, that would enable us, as Secretary Olivia said, to play in the sandbox. We were told it is a courtesy for the district to publish on our website current election information and administration does not have time to address the website being current to afford our stakeholders to play in the sandbox. The opportunity to prepare and consider a campaign in the same manner as other districts' fairly elected board, according to Act 503. We have petitioned you for our democratically elected board and the election of all seven since our return to local control and we feel that our election in spring twenty-twenty-six would be handled differently and would be a timely process if we had a democratically elected board. Thank you for allowing me to have public comment and to see the smiling faces. May you all have a blessed day. Now, this is something I think I need to get into, Secretary Olivia. This is according to Act 503. Nothing that we're, we're not asking for any special favors. We're just asking for compliance to the law, Act 503. The board transcript, I went back and reviewed it. They asked for five years. And what they have come up with is that they would, they would expire. And so therefore, we're just asking you to support us playing in the sandbox, according to law. Thank you. I don't know whether you can, this is from Arkansas School District, we did make this up. We really comprehension the sandbox, we.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will move on to reports. Does anybody have a board report? Cause if not, I do. Okay. Um, I just wanted to talk about an event I got to go to last week. It was at the Nels Dyslexia Center in Fayetteville. I don't know if everybody is familiar, but Don Nels and Millie Nels are the founders of the board and they have set up a dyslexia center for kids to be able to come get dyslexia tutoring. But their main goal is to actually help teachers, individuals whomever become COUTs, so it's the Certified Academic Language Therapist, to be able to basically tutor kids with reading disabilities. One in five kids in our state has dyslexia. So, the, the quick math that was given is about, there's ninety-five thousand students in the state of Arkansas that struggle. Um, their goal is to help produce a thousand teachers so that every single school in the state of Arkansas can have a COUT-certified language therapist in their school. So, they're partnering with the U of A to be able to make, um, just that possible. The requirements to become COUT-certified, are you familiar? It's like two hundred academic hours plus seven hundred practicum hours, like, it's, it's pretty significant to be able to be certified. I was really, um, impressed with the work that they're doing. So, that was my quick report, mhm. Alright. Yes?
Earlier this week, I was granted an opportunity, uh, to be on a call with industry leaders, uh, the discussion was a stakeholders discussion for the state of Louisiana and you had about sixteen, uh, career technical, uh, representatives on there as well. And, uh, it was a really good event because I was, I was granted an opportunity to brag about Arkansas, some of the things that we're doing here with CTE, um, Arkansas Lunch. I think I brought up Ross White name a couple of times, Dr. Ken Ward name and some of the things that we put in place, uh, with, uh, credentials of value and the work that was done, done leading to that, to where we are now. Very good meeting, um, very complimentary.
So thank you. Yes? Alright, Ms. Wilcox then?
Well, I thi- I think maybe I do.
Okay, yes.
Um, the, I was just, uh, in Washington DC to celebrate the hundredth anniversary of Pierce versus the Society of Sisters, which was an enormous Supreme Court decision out of Oregon, uh, that originated in Oregon, excuse me. And in that case, it was declared that children are not just mere property of the state. And it was a transformative principle that recognized parental rights in education and it was, uh, hosted by Catholic University. And I thought it was just a wonderful, uh, reminder of all of citizens participating in the educational system in America and of course, in our state. Dr. Smith will correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, in the United States, nine to ten percent of students uh, come from religious and independent schools. And I think that's mirrored if, and homeschoolers are included in our state. And so it's, it's just a reminder that, uh, uh, ninety plus ten equals one hundred.
Thank you. Mhm, okay. Wanna share, no? Okay, nope, okay. Alright, Ms. Wilcox then?
Can I, um, get the clicker to just grab it?
Sure, I can grab it.
Grab it.
Good morning, everyone. So I've got several exciting things to present over the past couple of months. So... So in July, I attended Space Camp, which was in Huntsville, Alabama. All of the cohort teachers that I'm a group of, we all attended together. And if you're not sure what that is, it's all the teachers from all the states who were named Teacher of the Year. They divided us up into groups, and we competed in teams. And it was kind of different. I felt like I was on the flip side of reality because for once, I felt like a kid again instead of being the teacher in the classroom. And there was tons of professional, you know, growth and learning, but as well as a lot of fun. My team was Team Oregon, I believe that was the same team that Bo actually was on last year. And in the middle, you'll see the picture of the group of us, that was our team. And Haley, astronaut Haley Arseneau is in that picture. I'm not sure if you're familiar with her. I'll tell you just a little bit about her story. So at age ten, she was diagnosed with bone cancer in her leg. She received treatment at St. Jude and went on to become a physician assistant. And she's actually currently works there now. She went back to St. Jude, who helped her. Now she's giving back to the kids and working with kids there. But at age twenty-nine, she was the first ever astronaut to be the youngest American to orbit the Earth, and the first pediatric cancer survivor in space, and the first astronaut with a prosthetic. And she spoke with us, and of course, we weren't just there alone. There were tons of kids there with us as well. And, I mean, she was, she's such an inspiration, just the things that she talked with the kids and, and us. She did say that had, had she picked any other career, she would have wanted to be a teacher. So, and I thought that was inspiring, too. But down the bottom, you can see our patch. So every year, each group that comes through Space Camp designs our, designs a patch. And we actually, my team won for the best batch.
We voted.
So that was exciting. We got to do missions, we built rockets, and my rocket did go off. But unfortunately, it floated into the trees. Some people got to bring theirs back. I unfortunately did not. I was kind of sad about that. I wanted to be able to bring it back and show it to my kids at school. We did missions there. You can see me sitting there. I was the actual flight director. And we did leave two in space, so, yeah. We, in the pictures with the eggs, we built like heat shields to be able to protect an egg from being fully cooked. So after we picked our materials, each group, you know, designed it with what they felt was the best materials to use to protect it. And, yeah, just a lot of fun, so... And so now you're looking at my first actual visits to schools. This was the first week of school, and so I was able to visit several schools around the state. And they allowed me to come in, and I read a book to the kids and did some activities with them. Of course, you know, if, if you're, if you know what it's like to be a teacher on the first day of school, you get zero breaks. You know, none. You're, you're even praying you get a chance to go to the restroom. And so the teachers were really excited that I come in, and, you know, I was like, if you need to go to the bathroom, or you need to do whatever, go, this is your chance, you know? But that was a super, super exciting week. My kids at Chanel, when I showed up, they were like, we never thought we were going to see you again, you know, because next year, when I come back, they'll be in middle school. And so this was just a really exciting week for me to be in the classrooms and be around kids and stuff. And then the Arkansas Travelers hosted an event a few weeks ago, and it was Teacher Appreciation Night. And yes, I got to throw the first pitch. I was a little nervous about that. That, that mound's a lot further when you get out there actually on the field. So I, unlike Bo, you know, he was a coach for baseball, and so he got up there and threw it like a champ. I did make it. It skipped once, but it did go straight to the catcher, so I was very pleased with that.
I did tell her right before she went up there, do not embarrass me. So I don't know if that made any other extra pressure, but she did fantastic.
But this was just a really fun night. They also recognized the legacy of the Litterock Nine, and so you can see a picture there of the, the ones that were, that were able to come for that night. So, yeah. And then also, you, there's a picture up there of all the regional and semifinalists for the twenty twenty-six ATOE. And then recently, something that I'm really excited to be a part of, Kisa Warman invited me to come and work alongside her and her math team here at the state. If you're not sure what she does, she's the A D A Math Public School Program Manager. And just a few things here listed and that we've kind of been working on was a coherence project for the Atlas Classroom Tool, developing a beginning-of-the-year diagnostic for third through fifth graders. Currently, there's one in place for K two. And so they're trying to, you know, make, make one for the third through fifth grade and eventually expand it even further than that. Math intervention plans, and then the coaching lab experiences, that's just like a coaching cycle where we go into the schools and work with the administrators, instructional coaches and teachers in schools that need support. So I'm excited that they've allowed me to work alongside them and hopeful that I can go into some of these schools and help, so.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Sounds like a fun month. What do you have coming up this month? Where are you going this month in terms of schools?
So, well, unfortunately, they're going to Watson Chapel, but I am going to be in Washington for that visit. So the next one will be Jacksonville Elementary. And I don't have the exact dates for that one. I just, she sent me just the first of the date. So I'm sad to have to miss the first one, but I'll be in Washington DC for a week.
Enjoy that.
So we have a few updates that we wanted to provide under our report. Some of it was requested from the board. So we, we've been doing a lot of work, if you remember, around updating our assessment system, getting the achievement levels across the finish line, able to get student learning gains across the finish line. And then we're looking at, Mr. Woods not here, but he asked us to look at our testing windows and timelines. What can we do to adjust it to be more efficient? How do we get data back to schools quicker? So we asked Hope to provide an update, an update of kind of where we are with the timeline, when we think we can accomplish some of these objectives, and then see if there's any questions that y'all may have from the field.
Well, good morning. Hope Porsham, Direct Assistant Commissioner of Public School Accountability. I'm going to steal back that clicker. We'll, we'll... So like Secretary Olivia said, we have been, we've actually been considering reducing the testing window for about a year and a half now, just because we are in a place where we implemented a five-week window almost ten years ago when we moved to online testing. And at that time, you know, online testing was brand new. People didn't have devices. Connectivity was an issue. And so we, we intentionally gave that long window to allow for schools to figure that out. However, with looking at the data over the past two years, we have seen that most schools, over ninety percent of testing is done within a four-week period. That last week of testing is typically used for makeup, so we see less than one percent of students testing in that week. And we do feel like that it is, we're at a good point where we could reduce that window, which would allow us to get state results back quicker, would also allow for additional instructional time by reducing that window by one week. As well as on the accountability side, it really helps with movement of kids and being able to reduce the amount of time that we have testing going on. So I just gave you the data at a very high level. Like you see, the percent, this was last year's data, the percent of testing that's going on in those, really in the three-week period is pretty significant. And then by week four and five, we really have dropped down to, to minimal amount of testing at that point. And I can get you that chart. I believe it got put in your packet. Okay. All right. So currently, the testing window runs for the last two weeks of April and into the first three weeks of May. And this is when every three through, actually, K through high school student is testing at that time. So in twenty-six, twenty-seven, so will not be this spring, we've already published the calendar for this spring, and everybody has everything in place. But we do plan for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year to reduce the testing window to four weeks. I believe that will, it will still cross over April and May. We do have a lot of schools that are getting out mid-May, like because of their calendar. But this would allow us to push that window as far back in the school year as possible. By not doing this until twenty-two, twenty-six, twenty-seven allows schools to plan for that. So we do plan to communicate that early so that they can plan their calendars accordingly. And then we're working with our district testing coordinators right now just to determine what roadblocks, you know, what, what may they, maybe they see coming down the pipe that we need to help support with so that we can help set them up for success. There are some things on our side we're doing we need to back off on, for example, so. So that is in the works, in the plans. Along with that, with the data return, we have been working with our vendor, Canbeam, to turn around data quicker and quicker. Secretary Olivia, I'll give him all the credit. He pushes every day on me about faster, faster. And I'm like, accurate, accurate, and we come to a good place in the middle. So this year, as, as a result of that, this year, an example of turning around data quicker, we, we released Atlas Scores in July, which is typical. The state law does require us to release scores by August one. This year, it was in July. So we just released the growth scores for schools to have access to their student growth scores, so they now have those. And they're able to use those to, to look at how their students did last year. In September, we will be releasing school ratings, so that's where we are right now. So we do anticipate this month we'll be able to do that. And then in October...
Which means grades.
Pardon?
Which means...
I'm sorry, school grades.
Just to make sure you understand.
School grades. Yep, so school grades should come out this month, which is about a few weeks earlier, almost a month earlier than we have typically done. So we're trying to pull that timeline back and as much as we can. In October, we are planning to release a whole revamp of the My School Info Landing page, which should make those school letter grades much easier for parents and the public to understand and view them and see them, really reducing kind of the clicks they have to go through there to make that a little bit more transparent. And then the next thing that comes out is the Teacher VAM Scores. That's where teachers are directly tied to students, and then they know their VAM Score, which is then used in merit pay calculation. So all of that timeline is actually quicker than what we've done in the past. And then districts will use all that data in the fall to review and revise their R app. Starting this spring, in the spring of twenty-six, we are going to be able to release test scores to districts almost immediately once students take them. So in the past, we have held them until July because we had to have the testing window finished. But we have worked with our vendor, and we will be able to, within about forty-eight hours of a student testing, the school will have their score, the student's score. They'll still have to wait till all students are finished to have their district scores. We'll still have to wait till everybody's finished to have state scores. But we, we feel like releasing that data as, as soon as possible allows schools to plan. It allows conversations around third grade, grade retention to happen early, and they have all the data they need to be making those decisions and having those conversations. So our goal is to get things out as quick as possible and as accurately as possible. We hope as well next year to pull the school letter grades a little bit earlier as well. There's a few things we're looking at trying to do on our side to, to make that process quicker also.
Out of curiosity, because I've not taken a test in quite some time, what's our audit process? Like, if we're turning it around in forty-eight hours, what are we doing in the subsequent weeks to ensure the accuracy?
Yeah, so our process normally, there's a, there's a few things we do with our vendor. So anything that's automated scoring, that doesn't require someone to read, we just watch the statistics on that with our Technical Advisory Committee. We review those every year. The, the place where we may have a small delay in scores is for our writing test. Anything that's hand scored, we have, it's called a ten percent read behind. So the, we computer score and have for about ten years our writing assessment. But there's always ten percent of tests that are kicked over and a human actually reads them to make sure everything's staying in line. So that will still happen, which means in a typical school, approximately ten percent of students' tests will be delayed two weeks. So you'll get ninety percent of your kids' scores within forty-eight hours for that writing test. There will be a few that it won't come back for a week or two until we can do that human score.
And then when do we communicate those scores to parents?
Parent scores can be communicated as soon as they have them. We now have the ten percent, the ten percent would be delayed as well, so that would happen. We do release the parent scores inside of a parent portal now. So in past, you had to get the paper copy and it had to get home. That is no longer the case. We actually have a parent portal now. Those scores are in parent portal as soon as kids take them. So that's everything from your interim test to your screener. All of that goes live to the parent as soon as it's live to the school. So there's no delay there.
So... So I'm, I'm, I'm excited about compressing the testing window. What is like the national norm for how many weeks of testing? Should we expect to get compressed even further? Is four weeks normal?
When we look across states that give computer-based testing, similar testing that we do, they range anywhere from two weeks to four-week windows, and depending on where they are in the process of implementing online testing. So like I said, for us, we've been at this for ten years now. I feel like looking at our data, four weeks is about right.
I, I just have, I kind of have this theory about, I call it the five-til. Like, it doesn't matter what time you close, there's always going to be somebody who like scoots in at five-til.
Right.
And so, you know, and so I wonder, you know, is there an opportunity to even compress it further? And, and your, your data will tell you the answer.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll keep a watch on it. You know, if it seems that four weeks works fine and they get it done in, in three weeks, then maybe there's an opportunity to reduce three weeks.
Sure.
Just keep pushing.
Well, what kind of flexibility do we give to each school and how they determine to give or test it? For example, a cousin of mine teaches at Turnbo in Springdale, and they did like Testing Tuesdays, and they just did a test every single Tuesday for the month. And I was just curious, we started looking at, does that help students if we spread it out? Does it not?
Yeah, so those are the exact questions I've asked my team to work with our district testing coordinators around and start looking at our data. Basically, we give the, right now, five-week window, and we give the latitude and freedom to the districts to schedule however they see fit. So then, one of the things I know we have encouraged is one test a day. Well, I don't know that there's any data to support that. So I've told my team, I'm like, that, that doesn't need to, that's not something we need to be saying. If schools want to do two tests in a day and get it over with in two days, then that's totally up to them. So there are some places I think we can tighten, and some places that, that I've asked them to start working with the coordinators and say, you know, what are some things that are realistic? Yeah.
Thank you. That was great. Yeah. That was fun.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith? Everyone's favorite subject.
It is the season.
Tis the season.
Well, good morning, everybody. We are now entering our third year of the Education Freedom Account Program, and it is, we'll give you some high-level information about that today. I thought we'd start off with some really good news, just to let you reckon, to let you know that in the last three years since the Learns Act is signed, Arkansas has been recognized as one of the top states in the country for educational choice. And you can see some of the national organizations and the ratings that they have given. Number two in the Freedman Index, which is a very popular and very, very respected index. The American Legislative Council, next to number three. Heritage Foundation, number five, and Center for Education Reform, number six. So Arkansas is being recognized as a state that is expanding opportunities for parents and for students and really providing those, those school options that really are best fit and best for the students that they have. So we're excited about getting that recognition. We're not there yet. We're going to keep pushing to our, you know, to our fearless leaders.
If I could jump in there, I believe the Heritage rankings just were updated this week, and we moved from number five to number four.
There you go. So we're getting better. And, and, you know, and as the, as this year continues, I think, we, we, you know, we anticipate some of those scores even going up as we go into our full universal program. We are only one of like three or four states that have a true universal program where every student, regardless of, you know, where you live and what your income level is or anything, is eligible for, you know, if you want to attend to private school or homeschool, is eligible. if you want to attend a private school or homeschool, is eligible for an education freedom account, and that's a big deal. And not, and that everybody gets the same amount. So some students have a universal thing, but the homeschool students get a much less, you know, or their level is a much less, their money that we give them is much less than they would in a private school.
Yes, Dr. Smith, to build on what Dr. Oliva just said, the Ed Choice Friedman Award really, or rating is highly regarded by, from a more broader base. So that number two ranking is very su-
It's a, it's a, it's a big number, and we're very proud of that, and, you know, we want to continue to move up on all these roles, we continue to let people know that what Arkansas is doing for school choice is a big deal, and that we want to, you know, and that parents are being able to be resourced now to help them find the best option for their children. So just to give you a couple little numbers here, this, the year that we just completed, we had over fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty-six, which was the max that we could have by law. We had a hundred and twenty-six participating schools and just over four hundred providers. I kind of break that down a little bit and just kind of see how, what the demographics of that was, we had a lot of students with disabilities this past year, thirty-six percent, twenty-seven percent were in kindergarten, sixteen percent were in the military, six percent foster care, and you can kind of read the, whether succeed, DNF-rated, and law enforcement. What's really fun to talk about is what we do this year, what we've just, the year that we've just started, we've had fifty-one thousand two hundred and thirty-one applications of that, forty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-four were approved, that means they met the eligibility requirements, which basically means you were a resident of Arkansas or, and you were five by August first, you met those two, then, and, you know, you wanted to attend a non-public school, or in a non-public school option, then you had that opportunity. Forty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-four students took advantage of that. There's a hundred and sixty-two private schools that are now participating in the program, eighteen thousand, I was going to, I was going to break that number up from the top, the approved participants, eighteen thousand four hundred and twenty, of those are homeschool students. So that's over fifty percent of the homeschool population in the state are now participating in the education freedom account, that leaves us about twenty-eight thousand two hundred or so in private schools that are also participating in the education freedom account. You've noticed also that participating providers has increased quite a bit, gone from just a little over four hundred to now over twenty-one hundred, and so we are, we are excited to have more opportunities for our families to choose from with its curriculum or other things, you know, supplemental instructional materials that they can choose from, and so we continue to try to not only create more providers, but a more diverse set of providers so that, again, that our families have more choice in the process.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is the increase in providers so substantial because we saw like co-ops and other micro schools setting up this year?
A little bit, I mean, we only had about, I think this year we have just over a hundred registered micro schools, so probably a hundred of that, but most of that's come from curriculum providers, supplemental instructional providers, some extracurriculars as well, but mostly in the instructional services providers. So that's been, that's been a really good way to, a really good indicator that a lot of people want to be, be part of the process that we're providing here in the state. Just kind of a fun fact, our team in both first three weeks of the program reviewed sixty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-seven invoices, as of today, that number has moved up to seventy-two thousand, so they are fast and hard at work, trying to review all the invoices that have come in over this first quarter, so that everybody was funded on the twenty-first of August, and so we got a lot of people ready to spend some money and get their, get their students ready for school and educate their kids in what they consider to be their best-fit environment. Again, just trying to help you out a little bit about the eligibility categories here, disabilities from a percentage standpoint, hasn't changed a lot, seventeen percent of those participating this year are in the disability, students with disability, veterans has moved up, the military, it's almost eleven percent of that, first responders has jumped up a little bit, that's six percent, foster care students, four percent, active-duty military, about two percent, DNF-rated schools about the same as it was last year, law enforcement and ski solo ships are down just a touch, but you can kind of get a feel for where, what eligibility categories or the original eligibility categories that we had and where students fit. In addition to that, we'll kind of give you a breakdown by grade, and you can see that basically that about fifty-five percent of the students participating in the EFA program come from a K five, so most, it's a lot of elementary students that are participating in the education freedom account, about twenty-three percent are in that middle school, that's sixth to eighth grade area, and then about twenty-two percent in the high school. So heavy, you know, heavy in the elementary, which some would expect, as far from an education freedom, you know, program and students choosing, because again, that's where we want to get those foundational skills, and so that's why we want to continue to provide good educational options for, and high-quality options for our students, because, as you can see, over half of the students that are in the program are in those foundational years, and so we got to make sure that the schools that they're attending and the places that they're doing are high-quality education, because that's going to, you know, we'll see the benefits of that throughout the, as they go through their middle school and high school careers. That's all I have as far as just from a high-level perspective for you, any questions that I can answer for you?
I don't have the paper copy, could we go back one slide?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it's nine in.
Which, which one would you like to go back to, sir?
That one.
Okay.
So while he's looking at that, I do have a question about the slide. And the DNF-rated schools, and you said there's really not been much change.
About two, about three percent of our students from last year to this year have come from super, come from D or F-rated schools, now that doesn't mean they weren't, they didn't come from a public school, they're just from a D or F-rated school. We'll have, we'll have all the official data at the end of the month when we produce our annual report, which is due by September thirtieth by law, and it will provide some much deeper detail of where students came from and where they, what, where they, what school they participated in in the previous years.
Yeah, I am particularly interested in that particular group though, and, you know, where we do have DNF schools, do they have alternatives? Do you know what I mean? And that's, that's kind of my big question.
It's a huge question, and one again, that we're certainly working on and one very aware of, you know, one of our goals over the next few years is now to make sure that we've got high-quality supply and high-quality options for all of our students, especially in some of those areas where, you know, high-quality options aren't available right now. So we're continuing to look at those areas throughout the state and through private schools or charter schools or homeschools, to make sure that we're providing good, high-quality options for students, you know, throughout the state, especially in some of those areas that are maybe underserved or vulnerable at this particular time.
Just a couple of things, just with communication.
Yeah.
Just a reminder, but applicants, what changed that spelling? And then, um...
Okay, so spelling, come on, come on, spelling. I know, education spelling, come on, I can read, I can spell.
Sorry. The, just for, because it's first year of universal eligibility, just again, for people that would look at this and lose track of the three-year stagger, I'm just thinking of communication.
Sure.
Because we're all on one team here, that, then this isn't, this doesn't add up to a hundred percent, so then there's this category of just universal.
Correct. This was, yeah, basically this graph was to kind of give you an indication compared to last year.
Yes.
So that you're comparing it to the, because last year we did have eligibility categories that were required, that you couldn't get into the program unless you met. So we were just using this, basically this graph as a comparison to show you the difference between last year and this year in these eligibility categories, but you're absolutely right, there's a whole lot of people that didn't meet any of these categories.
And one people will know that, it was very helpful, but it's just we continued to message the whole population, it'll just be good to even add more clarity, but thank you so much for the statement.
Absolutely right, and in our annual report, that will become a little bit more clear.
Okay.
But thank you for that comment, thank you.
I would love to know if we are collecting and if it will be shared in the future, some success stories from these particular groups.
We're working on some of those, yes, absolutely, because there's a lot of families who are benefiting greatly from this program that would not have had these options otherwise. Absolutely.
Have there been any, any studies or anything done to point out the different geographics of this numbers reflect?
We're looking at that, and again, trying to figure out where did, where do most of our kids come from and where they are throughout the state, certainly northwest and central Arkansas, that's where your heavier populations are, so that certainly is represented in the numbers, but we're continuing to look again at the options, so we're looking at where these students are coming from, and that helps us again to the, to Ms. Hunter's comment to make us say, where do we need options? You know, if we find some places where there's not a lot of students in there, that maybe there's not a lot of options for them to go to, other than maybe a homeschool, which may or may not be a best fit for them. So we are continuing to look at those, look at those numbers and analyze as we, as we move forward.
So, I'm sorry, well, just, I talk to Carol all the time, so, just to continue the conversation. Well, and I mean, I think this is an issue for our legislator friends to deal with, but you know, on your next slide, where you, you're looking kind of at the pipeline, I mean, I, I am excited that, you know, the younger students are taking advantage, or their parents believe that they are being put in the best environment for their learning. But, you know, if that trend continues, I mean, they're just, I guess we don't know if they're going to exit, say, a private school or a, if something that is not in district, in their, in public school, um, once they get to a certain, you know, are they going to go back? Don't know the answer to that yet, but if they don't, I mean, we've got a lot to think about.
A lot of students moving through, and it will be interesting to see over the next few years, as these students mature and as they kind of progress through, do they start moving to a different option when they get into those middle school and high school options? Which also, also will tell some of our choice options right now, that maybe you need to provide different, and probably either higher quality or different services at those upper grades, those six through eight, twelve grades, that maybe they're not getting right now, which is causing them to, to leave an option that maybe they would prefer, but because of the options, they don't, they don't maybe necessarily provide what they need at those upper grades. And so again, I think it helps everybody, it helps some of your private schools, your non-public schools, to really analyze this data about what's a good option for you and what may, what, what can we do to continue to provide that option in the upper grades, and also for our non-public, you know, for our public institutions to say, okay, when we get up to start moving, when some of those students start moving up into the upper grades, then maybe that, you know, there's going to be a shift back, so we're not, we're not totally sure what's going to happen, but something we'll continue to look at and advise and review over the coming years as the, as the program matures.
Thanks, Michael. I know a lot of this will be theoretical, because this is really our first year, you know, first little, but I know tuition is a big one, and so how are we internally auditing tuition rates?
Yeah, absolutely. Great question. So every year before a private school is approved, so every, even if they've been, started with this in their very first year, every year, a private school has to submit kind of a packet, a renewal packet, if you want to do that. Part of that packet is what's your tuition, right? And so we're looking longitudinally at what your tuition is, so not only do we do that, but we also look back, so if you're a new, like for this year, if you were a new thing, we look back at your tuition last year, even before you were in the program, and we look at to see if there's a difference. And so once we get into that, you know, once we kind of do the analysis of that, if we see something that's a little high, then we start investigating, it just kind of goes, it's not a no, and it doesn't put up a red flag that, oh my gosh, they're trying to, you know, inflate their tuition, but it does allow us to just ask some questions. So we really spend some time with that particular school and analyze, why did you raise your tuition? Right? A lot of times what you'll see is some of these schools were heavily subsidized by an outside source. For example, a lot of our Catholic schools have, are heavily subsidized by maybe the parish. And so one of the goals that we want to try to help these schools get to is that they can live on their own, because sometimes you don't want to have a school that's totally dependent upon outside sources to provide the education that we need them to provide. So we, so not only do we ask them how, where, you know, what, why did you go up, but also what's the cost of educating a child? And so we ask them to give us a detailed cost of educating a child, so look at that and see if it aligns kind of with, you know, just typical education, you know, line items there. And as long as we feel like we're comfortable with that, and they feel like, hey, these are the things based on kind of your demographic and your areas, so that you can educate a child and support your school and provide, you know, the necessary, you know, high-quality teachers and the resources that those students need, then we're feeling pretty good. So a lot of times, like we had, I think we had a Catholic school that charged three thousand dollars in the past, and they raised it to seven thousand. Well, that seems like a massive, like you look at that, if you just looked at that on paper, you'd go, well, they're just trying to, you know, they're just trying to get the money. But when they really analyzed it, said, well, you know, thirty-five hundred dollars every year was coming from the parish, and so now they're trying to say, hey, let's not, let's not be dependent upon the parish to run a school, because we're in, we're in an area where we can really truly provide a good education for this community. And if we can do that and, and use the parish money to supplement our education and improve our education beyond what we could do previously, then that's going to benefit everybody, it benefits the community, it benefits the, that benefits the school, that allows you to get a higher, potentially a higher-quality teacher in the, in the program, which again benefits everybody. So we do do a fairly extensive analysis when a, when a school comes in and we, and we see maybe a jump that's more than five, six, seven percent, we look at that and we do, we do some, we just start asking questions, like, give us some justification, some rationale, that you're not just adding a seven thousand dollars on top of what you were already charging, right? Because that's what we're trying to guard against. In fact, you know, we're mandated by law that we are to make sure that we, there's, you know, that we look at so that we don't have an unreasonable inflation in tuition and fees, and so we make sure that, that there is a legitimate rational reason, strategic reason for you to raise your prices up. And does it, and it's kind of another piece of that puzzle, is we also look at the community and where you're at in the state. You know, what, what, if you're charging something that's well above kind of that average income or something of that state, we're going to, we're going to question that, like, are you, are you truly providing more options for students? Because that's the point of the, and that's the purpose of the, of the program, is to provide quality options for students, and so if you outprice your market, then you're, you know, you're reducing the amount of students that have access to the high-quality education, that's another thing that we look at and that we will talk to schools about throughout that, through that renewal process.
That's good. I do know of a couple of schools that have even refused to go up to the, the baseline amount.
Yeah.
Which is admirable, I mean, they're just on principle, just sticking to their, their normative tuition. But to build on what our chair has asked, then are your, is the, is our, is your office collecting anecdotes, or is it true a database of what the schools are doing in this tuition area?
So we're looking at their published, they, the published tuition, so what they're, we know what they're charging, and not just, and so we're also looking then at there any fees or discounts and those types of things that they're providing, and how they're providing it, who they're providing it to as well, so we're not just kind of taking them at the word a little bit, we're looking at what they charge as we go through the year, then we kind of go back and check their websites and make sure that they didn't all of a sudden submit to us one tuition rate, and then all of a sudden, you know, once the school year started, jack it back up.
So we have a record of a hundred and sixty-two tuitions.
Yes, sir.
And their trend line.
Correct.
Great.
So what do you see, because I know the statute basically says the state board is charged with determining what is unreasonable internally, is there like a line that you're like, this is no longer ours? Let the state board be the bad guy and let them decide?
Yeah, we've, we've been-
And again, that, it's probably, it's not happened yet, so we may not know what that line is.
Well, it's a great question, and I tell you, we're, we're a little hesitant to just throw a number out.
Sure.
Because I think what happens when you throw a number out, everybody says, well, I can go up to this number, nobody's going to check, right? And so what we want them to do is say, you determine your cost of education, and then based on that, set your tuition. And so, you know, if we can do that, then we feel like that's a better read on what the school's doing than if we say, okay, you can go, you can raise your, you know, up to ten percent every year. Well, if I know I can raise it up to ten percent without you questioning me, I'm going to raise it ten percent, and I'm not going to worry about it. But if I know that you're going to be checking on me every year, and you're going to be, you know, analyzing, kind of scrutinizing a little bit of the increase that I've got, then, you know, then I might think twice when I'm at a board meeting and I'm trying to set tuition for the next year, right? And so I think that's another way that we can hold private schools accountable, to being sure that they're, that they're reasonably increasing their tuition or doing what they feel is best for their schools, and, and not taking advantage of a program or not taking advantage of families in their, in their community.
Well, and I think where my, it wasn't a number I was specifically thinking, but like if you guys determine, you know, this six percent seems fine, but we still question the strategy behind it, at what point do you just defer to us versus just, I mean, I don't want you to ever get to a position where you're in a private school and saying, you can't increase it that much or you're out of the program, like, I don't know that has to be your responsibility.
Yeah, I, I think if, if we got a lot of pushback from a school, you know, where, where, you know, we were asking them some questions to justify their, you know, their, their increase, and they just were just, I know, we're not going to tell you, or we're not going to give you all the information that you're asking for. I think at that point, we would, you know, say, look, you got one of two choices here. We can either cooperate, we can work on this together and we can try to figure out, you know, what, what's the best here, or we can take you to the state board and ask for...
See what they decide.
Yes, and see what, see what they think about what you're doing.
And then I have another question on the auditing of all of our providers.
Okay.
Because I know we've got a lot of pushback on, you know, we're just open-handed, everybody can apply to B. So what auditing process will we start for all of these new twenty-one hundred providers?
So, yeah, and, and again, that's a great question and there's, what, what we really work on, so getting in's not necessarily super hard. I mean, depending on what, depending on what you're doing. And, and I think some of that depends on what you're doing. If you're a curriculum provider, pretty easy to get in, right? Because you're providing a curriculum and you're providing another choice for families, that's it. If you're an extracurricular provider, not so much, I mean, you know, you're providing an extracur, you're providing a service for our students. So there's the, you know, there's, so there's the, the, I guess the standard, the bar is a little bit different for those guys, right? Now, if you're going to be an instructor or a therapist or a tutor, you're going to be spending one-on-one time with the student. That bar, that anticipation, but now we're looking at more, we're back, like background checks and we're looking at certifications and we're looking for reasons, you know, we're looking for, do you have the necessary skills to do what it is that you're saying that you're going to do? And can you provide a high-quality service for these students? Ultimately, the auditing comes from parents, right? Because if we, if we're looking at, you know, a, a vendor and we don't see a lot of people, you know, choosing them, or we see only one or two families choosing them, that, that kind of puts a flag up for us. And so we're going to go check you out and we're going to go kind of find out what's going on. If we see a lot of families choosing them, I mean, we also, you know, that's what's one of the, one of the things we also do at the end of the year, we're starting this year, because we're now, we've kind of got a full, you know, full-service vendors, is that we'll be doing surveys of parents about vendors. So they'll be able to tell us. In addition to, we also have our, you know, our financial integrity lines, so that if people feel like something's not going well or somebody's trying to take advantage of something or, then that can be reported and then we investigate that. In fact, we just had one just the other day that came in and said, yeah, we think something's just not right here. So we started our case, we started the investigation and figure out what's that process? Is it really, was it just a, you know, just a miscommunication or was there really something more nefarious that's going on at that point? So, so we start that investigation, we find something that is a little bit more out of way than we would have, you know, sent it to the attorney general for further, you know, for further investigation. But, so I guess the audit purpose here is really to, number one, the more time, the more, the closer you're getting to a child, right, the higher the audit, the higher the standard, right? If you're just providing a service or a product that is an eligible, that meets, that's under the eligible expense, then that's, that's a little bit easier to get into the program. You know, we make sure that we have, that we can verify who you are, that, you know, that you're legitimate, that you're providing a, you know, an eligible service, those types of things. All of that's just minimal for everybody. But when we get, but the, the criteria increases the closer again that you, that you're going to be to a child.
Dr. Smith, how are the mechanics of the wallet going this year?
For the class wallet?
Mm-hmm.
Um, better.
Better.
We'll, we'll leave it at that. Uh, better. I think class wallet has, has worked with us a little bit. We've, we've spent a lot of time over the last six months trying to become more efficient in that process. Their, their system's not quite, it's not developed quite as well as we'd like it to be yet, as far as really providing a really good customer service, a seamless customer service across the board, but they're improving. I will say that. They have, they have taken some of the things that we learned from last year that we really, really liked and they've incorporated that into, into the private school side. So we've, we've gotten better at the private school participation in that process.
Okay.
Uh, so it's not quite as cumbersome as it has been in the past. For homeschool and reimbursement, still fairly cumbersome. But I mean, some of that's just by the nature of the beast of you having to look at every reimbursement receipt.
So in other words, their weaknesses fall back on the department?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if we still have that, and the answer is probably no, there used to be a marketplace that you could go through from the website and use like Clio dollars?
So there's, there's actually three ways you could, that a parent can purchase them or that you can use your EFA funds. So obviously from a private school, typically that's tuition. Um, but beyond that, for services, products, those types of things, there is a marketplace. Marketplace typically is your bigger kind of store.
Like Amazon.
Big retailers, yeah, it's, right? Like Best Buy, you know, Staples, that kind of stuff. Then you have direct pay or those vendors that say, you know, that have a product that they're okay with being there and doing this process of creating the invoice, sending